This evening, we have a young lady who's gonna do our pledge. She's from Pfeiffer Elementary. Her name is Naomi Boyes. And Naomi is a ninth grader, nine-year-old, ninth grade, excuse me. And Naomi is a nine-year-old and is the fourth grade at Pfeiffer Elementary. She started at Pfeiffer this year after four years at Valley View Elementary School in Wasworth. Her family moved here from Wasworth to be part of a church plant that's starting, it's Easter in Kenmore where both of Naomi's parents grew up. Naomi's favorite subject is art and she also loves to read. In January, she received Pfeiffer's Principal Award for Outstanding Character and Academic Excellence. Excellence. Naomi also enjoys singing, dancing, basketball, lacrosse, and learning new technology. Naomi's little brother Drew is also a student at Pfeiffer and is in kindergarten. Naomi, will you come up, please?
(Singing) "Blessed are the nations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you very much.
Naomi, do you have anybody you want to introduce who'll come with you this evening?
I've got my mom and my principal Miss Quill.
Your mom? Is there someone else that you brought with you?
My principal Miss Quill.
Who's the little guy?
My daddy Drew.
And your brother, okay. All right. This is where we picture each other. So you have to look at me, Yuki Bruce.
On a side note, her mother is accomplished and a community activist as well. And among other things, Ryan and I are both in leadership background with Akron Boys this year.
(Inaudible)
Okay, we'll move on. If you guys don't wanna stay, I know Drew told me early that he really doesn't wanna be here.[152.31][152.31](Laughter) He wants to go, so if you want, feel free to leave at this point.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming.[161.19][161.19](Applause) Okay, next, we have some distinguished women here today. They are women from Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, Akron Alumni Chapter. And they're here with us this evening. I'm gonna read a few things here about Delta Sigma Theta and then I'm gonna ask you what I've done to please stand, all the Deltas. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was founded on January 13th, 1913, on the campus of Howard University in Washington DC. The followers were 22 trailblazing young women who are committed to public service, scholarship, and sisterhood. These college students wanted to use their collective strength to promote academic excellence, to provide scholarships, to provide support, to underserve, to educate and stimulate participation in the establishment of positive public policy, and to highlight issues and provide solutions for problems in their community. The sorority's major programs are based upon the organization's five-point programmatic thrusts, namely in the areas of economic development, educational development, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, political awareness and involvement. The Akron Alumni Chapter has a rich history in our community and members and organizations have been awarded for their commitment to public service. The following illustrates some of educational activities. In support of education, on February 27, 2016, they sponsored the 35th Annual Les Bill Pearls (the beautiful pearls) Coalition for high school students. More than 90% of the students who have participated in this scholarship endeavor have been products of Akron Public Schools and was awarded $15,000 in scholarship. Delta Sigma Theta Academy and Delta Gims, a mentoring program for middle school and high school students. They work to broaden the experience and exposure of STEM concepts and political process. Scholarships, in addition to the Coalition Scholarship, the Akron Alumni Chapter has awarded thousands of dollars in scholarship to youth through their chapter scholarships or contributions to the United Negro College Fund Project Grant Akron and their Endeavor Scholarship at the University of Akron and Central State Universities. In October, they spearheaded a forum for candidates for Akron Public Schools and the chapter consists of educators and other professionals who are passionate about working with children and adolescents in the school setting. It is their goal to support Akron Public Schools by helping to make sure that students graduate and become productive members of society. The chapter's president is Dr. Angela Graves Westcott and the chairperson of the Political Awareness and Involvement Committee is Dr. Lisa Sims. Will the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority please stand?[358.62][358.62](Applause) We want to thank you ladies for attending today. We want to thank you for all the service you provide, the scholarships, the education, the leadership. We always need our help with our students and we appreciate all that you do and we hope to continue to do a very good job. Thank you for being here this evening. Next on the agenda is Communication and Reflections. Would anyone like to start with Communication and Reflections or have any Communication reflections?
I did want to just go back to the Deltas for just a second, if you don't mind, Mr. President.
Okay, yes.
I know I can't speak for all the candidates, but I will speak for myself. We are very appreciative of your wonderful form and the opportunity that you gave us to present our platform in a very well-organized manner. So we want to thank each of you and I think the young lady there who chaired it and your fine work that you do in the community. Delta has had a tremendous impact, I know, in this community and in particularly a former church that I was a member of. Many of Deltas were part of the Wesley Temple family and particularly in education as well. So I want to thank you for your continued support in the community and the fine work that you do as women of excellence. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. May I ask Drew?
I wanted to give a shout out to the, we had the OMEA small ensembles and solo ensemble at Firestone High School in February. I was just talking to this folk about that. We happened to have it on the coldest day that we've had this winter and with the parking situation at Firestone, it was a challenge, but as soon as I walked in the door, one of the first things that the band director said to me was how absolutely thrilled she was with how the staff had prepared. All the walks were cleared off despite the fact that we'd had several inches of snow overnight and we had a 15 below wind chill factor and it was a Saturday morning and everything was ready. The building was in fantastic shape and they just did a fantastic job getting ready. I think we had over 2,000 people in and out of the building that day on a Saturday. And, you know, despite the parking challenges, the road was cleared and the walks were fantastic. Did walk a half a mile from my parking spot. I could've practically walked from home that day. I don't know what I was thinking. But it was a fantastic event and the Firestone and the rest, the Firestone families came together to make it a great event and Akron Public Schools was very well represented and the scores were fantastic. We have another one coming up with the large groups that'll be held at Bookdale and that's not this weekend, but next, the fourth and fifth. And that will be with large groups, so full bands, full choirs, really large groups. So it'll be another huge bunch of people coming to perform and getting a chance to see yet another of our buildings and letting yet another staff shine as far as how they will, you know, be prepared. I also got to attend the high school choirs in the round the other night. Unfortunately, Bands in the Round was canceled by our snow day, but choirs in the round was held at Kenmore High School. Again, big shout out to the staff. I was helped by one of our security folks to find, you know, my way through the building to the right spot because I wasn't sure if it was gonna be in the gym or in the auditorium and they were extremely helpful. And the performances were not just great by all of the choirs. I think what I was most impressed with was the decorum in which every choir held themselves. They were respectful and encouraging to each other. I saw them stopping each other in the halls on the way out, saying what a great job they thought the other choir did. Just giving each other compliments in a really supportive way and that was great to see. So the staff for the Fine Arts Department and all of those choral teachers should be commended for the behavior and decorum of their choirs. It was great.
Outstanding. Anyone else?
Well, I can say that I did go to the boys' basketball championship, just to continue the theme.[658.11][658.11](Laughter) I do go to other things besides basketball, believe it or not, but it's sounding like it. And congratulations to Firestone, they did a great job and I'll cut in on Bruce, but Bruce was there and made the presentation at the end and did a very lovely job of representing the schools, so we're proud of what we did. And then the next day, I went to see the girls' Ellet team because I had yet to see them and since that's my cluster, I thought I should. And they were playing Walsh, so how could I not go?[690.12][690.12](Laughter) They lost, but that's all right. It was the first round of the playoffs and they were... And then the only other thing I was able to do this week, I did go to, which has kind of been related because I saw many Akron alumni and people at Gospel Meet Symphony the other night and it was a fabulous, fabulous presentation. There are many of our staff and people that are involved in it in the choir, so just want to say it was a beautiful night, so.
(Inaudible) a beautiful night. Anyone else? Okay, I want to do one other thing real quick. I want to recognize Ms. Veronica Sims, who was one of our school board members who was sitting here. Stand up, Ms. Veronica.
Okay, I gotta clap now.[738.12][738.12](Laughter)
Veronica always supports us even though she's on city council, but we love her. We always want to make sure she's recognized when she's in our presence. Next, we have on the agenda our Communications and Recognition. We have a presentation for early learning program update by Patricia Cronin.
I'm Chris Cronin and I'm the Early Learning Program Coordinator in the district. And we'll talk a little bit about our preschoolers, our youngest students, and how we're doing in ELP. Of course, we follow the district focus and the district plan and we have a few essential questions that we talk about with our young children being ready to learn as they enter kindergarten. We want them to achieve at the highest levels and we are the beginning steps of those children preparing for life and post-secondary education. Our early learning program has many goals that fit directly into our district plan. Implementing our content standards that are in accordance with the state to assure core instruction. Implementing transition process in order that our students move into kindergarten and are successful. We also do a lot of assessing in our early learning program, including the state-required assessments, district assessments, and then again, our teacher assessments to make sure our students are continually making progress. Our teachers are involved in weekly PLCs and as a staff, we continue to develop a pyramid of interventions strictly for preschool in order to meet our students' individual needs. And within the past couple of years, we've been able to increase our access and use of technology in the program. We took a look at the KRA scores from the fall, which actually were recently released from the state, and we did a comparison of the district students who did not attend our early learning program and our students who attended our early learning program. And the orange bar is our early learning program students. These are peer models and we did find that their scores were higher in all cases and substantially higher in the area of social foundations. Currently, we're serving 560 preschoolers with and without disabilities. By the end of the year, this number will grow. We usually end the school year over the 600 mark, but right now, we have peer models who are students without disabilities participating in the program. We have 269 children who have an IEP. When I mention pending placements, that's basically because we continually add students throughout the school year. We have students who are being evaluated to see if they meet the criterion to come in as a child with an IEP. And we also continue to publicize the fact that we offer the early learning program to preschoolers in the community. So we are still screening and assessing children and adding them to our classrooms. We noticed, though, that since we have put on a big push to get more peer models, we have had an increase of 43% of our peer models since the 2012-13 school year. So we really are trying hard to include so many more children from the community. Our basic services, what we call our center-based classrooms, where children come to our classes two and a half hours a day and they come five days a week. We have morning and afternoon sessions. Some services are provided to our children who cannot come to the center but who attend preschool, either at Head Start or in a private community preschool or daycare. And those services are provided mainly to our students with disabilities through our itinerant teachers who travel throughout our region. Our preschoolers with IEPs also may have the added support from our speech and language pathologist, occupational therapist, or physical therapist. And keep in mind that those related service people do benefit our entire classroom, not just our children on IEPs. We have converted all of our sites to early childhood environments where, for the most part, we have an equal number of children with and without disabilities in the classroom and we often have more children who are peer models than children with disabilities. We do have a couple specialized classrooms for our children with autism and our children who are hearing impaired and they have a longer day program available to them. This just shows you geographically our distribution across the district of our classes. The numbers indicate how many ELP classes are in those respective buildings. The two pictures show you Essex Elementary, which we opened within the past few years. We currently started there with three classrooms. We've now expanded to five classrooms. And the lower picture is Storch on Vernon Odom where we currently have eight preschool We really are concerned that we are offering high-quality early learning services to our students. And going hand-in-hand with that, we have licensing by the Department of Education, but we also are going through what's called the Step Up to Quality Rating System. You may have noticed in some of the preschools and daycares in the community, there are signs with that little person and the stars that say Step Up to Quality. All of our sites except for Storch are going to be rated this school year. Storch has been rated five stars for the past two years and annually, we have to renew our rating. That is done through the Ohio Department of Education licensing along with the Step Up to Quality Rating. We continue to offer programs for our parents and two of our staff members do a large part of this. Melissa Milford, who's our family services specialist, and Melissa Sage, who's our transition teacher. And we offer a variety of programs throughout the school year. We talk to parents about transition, what's going to happen when their children go to kindergarten. We offer some programs that talk about what to do with preschool children in the area of language, in the area of math, in the area of pre-reading, how to read stories to your children. We try to also get input from the parents. We do parent surveys twice a year to try to get feedback to see what parents' needs are. And then we try to coordinate our programs to meet parent needs. We also have a lot of partnerships with community agencies. I'll talk about that on another slide. But we are really dedicated to providing appropriate transition services to our students entering kindergarten and Melissa Sage is the person who's providing those extensions for us, for the children who we may say might have a difficult transition. And she is our person who is the liaison and she works in the kindergarten classrooms as well as in the preschool classrooms, getting those children ready to move to the following school year. Of course, the Ohio Department of Education does have Ohio Early Learning and Development Standards and it is in five basic areas. These dovetail very closely into the standards for our students in the elementary, kindergarten, first grade, et cetera. But in preschool, we know that we are addressing the needs of the whole child, so the standards are written a little bit differently than they are in the school-age programs. We do have a set curriculum we use. It's called the Creative Curriculum. And the Creative Curriculum believes in hands-on experiences through a variety of studies. So our teachers have all had several days of training in the Creative Curriculum. We have a lot of materials now from the Creative Curriculum. It uses a combination of books, literature, and hands-on learning, project-based learning types of activities. You can see the little picture is the children who are working on the roads study. And then the children, based on the children's experiences and what they're doing, that can move our roads study into a lot of different areas. We've been fortunate with our preschool dollars to increase the use of technology in our preschool classrooms. So we do have computers in all classrooms for student use. We have iPads in each classroom and we are concentrating on a couple different basic skills programs. And the programs that we use specifically for our students do track student progress. So at the end of the school year, we can see how students did or before the end of the school year, so we know if we have to change some of our instruction and this is giving us good and valuable information. Teachers also use a variety of other programs on the computers for the students. Again, we are hoping that our students will learn those mouse skills that they need for kindergarten and for the math testing as they move forward. Getting to funding and our partnerships in the community, we've been very fortunate in the past three years that we have been able to acquire more dollars from the Early Childhood Expansion grant monies. So you can see that in the 13-14 school year, we had 157 slots that were allotted to our district. That increased the following year to 232 slots and the increase this year was to 352 slots. So we are continually hoping to gain more and more slots as we go into next school year. We also have some special education dollars for funding and of course, Akron Public Schools' general fund monies for some of our programs. Community partners, we've been very blessed to have a wide variety of community partnerships. And we do have a lot of those community agencies that work with us on a regular basis, some one or two times a year, some are our partner throughout the school year. Just a couple examples, PNC Bank in the fall brought us their mobile planetarium and we were able to have many classes of children come in, not just from Storch and Essex, but we involved some of our other sites and bused those students in in order to receive the program that PNC had to offer. We are also excited because we just started a partnership with the Ohio County National Park Rangers, bringing a little more of that science into our curriculum, which is kind of one of those areas where we want to beef up our information for our students. We've also had a nice relationship with Spark and we're going to be expanding some of our interactions with Spark and hopefully getting some more Spark sites within the district. As we look at next steps, we have a lot to do. We're still not where we want to be, but we will continue to recruit students because we need to fill those extra seats and again, applying for more preschool seats as we move into next school year. We have already talked to Spark about expanding into more school neighborhoods and we're trying to finalize some of those ideas. We continue to support our county-wide efforts. We have a partnership, strong partnership with Summit Education Initiative on our Transition Skills Summary, which is, it's a summary of skills that students learn as they move through the preschool years. And we assess them at the end of preschool when they're ready to transition to kindergarten. And this Transition Skills Summary gives the incoming kindergarten teacher information on the skills that those children have at the end of preschool. This is something that is done county-wide and we've been participating in that for the last three years. We also want to continue to strengthen our transition services into kindergarten because we want our students to be successful. I hope that I have covered a lot of the important points for you, but I'd be glad to respond to any questions you might have.
First, thanks for the presentation. I think ELP, the Early Learning Programs, is undoubtedly one of the best investments I think we can make. Having had a foster child at one point in the early learning program, you know, speaking from experience, I just, excellent program, very much needed. And if there's anything unfortunate about the program, it's just that there aren't enough dollars to do everything that I'm sure you'd like to do and to expand it both, you know, the length of the day and the number of days. And what is the unmet need? Do you know what the numbers are for the unmet need either in the Akron community or in the county-wide? You have 357 slots, but I'm sure we have a lot greater need.
Well, the last round of grant dollars that was put out by the state was offered to, in Summit County, was offered to a lot of different entities. So it was kind of one of those situations where some of the private schools that have preschool programs in other districts, so it wasn't just public schools that were offered the money, it was offered to a wider scope. And the way the state is divvying up the dollars is based on the 12 regions. In the state of Ohio, they divided the state into 12 regions and then they look at the socioeconomic levels in those regions and they key in on the 10 areas of that particular region that have the most need. And then they offer the slots and then you have to apply and you have to do it as more of a grant proposal.
Do we know how many students, regardless of, I guess, how they divvy up the dollars and to which organization they go, do we have an idea of how many students are still not receiving services because there's just not funding there?
It's hard for us to determine that because we don't like, I don't know how many dollars go to Head Start, for example, and how many of the children actually that are in an Akron Head Start are actually Akron Public Schools students because of the way they divvy up... So even if you had a number, that doesn't necessarily reflect that it's all of the students that are attending Akron Head Starts because some of our Akron students could be in Barberton and some Barberton students or Towne students could be in Akron. So it's really hard to discern those numbers because we don't have privy to a lot of that. I know that we still are not seeing all of the students that enter kindergarten. We have a long way to go to get there. One of our barriers, unfortunately, is that many parents cannot get their children to a site. And that's been one of our biggest concerns. And that's, we're working on that actually at the county level because that's an issue in the county of how to get children back and forth to centers that could benefit them.
So the qualifications that, right now, is more on need-based, financial need-based, socioeconomic need-based?
That's what it has been in the past couple of years. It's been more on need-based and then once the initial grants go in... And then once the, once the initial grants go in, and if there's extra, then other people can apply for them. And we have done that. Where this year, we started the year with fewer slots. And then we ended up getting 55 more, I think in November was the date. So we've actually already increased for this school year the number of slots that we were originally awarded.
Okay. How can we move towards universal pre-k?
Oh. Well, probably one of the ways would be to have more available space in some of the buildings where we're not currently located. But in some cases, that may not be possible. But that's, you know, when we have children that are in that catchment area, we do tend to get students from those particular areas. But we also have some areas of the community that are more popular than others. We've, you know, we've had a lot of interest at some sites and not in other sites. So some of the sites this year, we actually were low in getting children from the community. And other sites, we were high. So sometimes it's parents who are driving that. And again, you know, getting that publicity out to see how we can increase.
I think these, I want to mention one thing because of the countywide strategy here too, that we're one player in our county executive's drive with first things first, to have a countywide answer to how do we at least approximate as close as we can to universal preschool in this county. We're very active on those boards and committees and commissions to make sure that we have a place. But certainly, some of the barriers are the financial, just the number of seats. But it's also transportation, it's location, it's access, it's making sure that people feel comfortable where the locations are. But these countywide teams are trying to address all those. Transportation is huge. And that would certainly be an area that we can always look at within this district. But know that those conversations are happening across the county as well.
Another is, what we do at pre-k now, is there any information that can be encouraging, positive, that by the time they get to third grade, what we're doing now, we'll equip them to pass third grade KRT or do well on any other, the math assessment and the other testing? Do we have any data?
We're working on that. This is my fourth year in the district, and that's one of my projects. So the children I started with are just getting into that realm. So we are working on that. We've had some issues with some of the state data. And some of the data that we originally collected, that the state has changed some of our assessments. So it's kind of hard to do some of those comparisons based on what we were using the two, four years ago versus what we've been using the past two years. The information that we have from last year and this year will be better indicators because it is more like the assessments that children have in kindergarten and up along. So that is something we're very conscious of and working on.
I know, I'm sorry to ask.
No, that's okay.
And I know Summit Education Initiative has been working in the faith-based communities, encouraging us to encourage our children to read, to get the Dolly Parton books, and to participate in a number of areas. And one is they have 16 points. I think that the children learn these 16 points, that they'll be able to do well in the things that we want to do. So are we in our curriculum, have our curriculum geared toward these 16 points?
Yes, we do, we do. And our transition specialist in particular has been working on those things with parents and the parent groups that we have. But we have also been working with teachers. And the teachers are the ones who complete the Transition Skills Summary. And we've had many discussions on collectively, as a teacher group, on what types of things need to be happening in the classroom. And what types of things we need to be doing as far as interventions on that pyramid to make sure all children are achieving successfully.
The last slide, you showed a comparison, Sparks versus, I assume, what we do.
Right.
In our discussion committee group, we were looking at Sparks. Sparks deals more with in-home parental involvement. So that's somewhere we want to go, the Spark and non-Spark. What's the difference? Can you just give some general information?
Could I chime in just a little bit? Just because we talked about this at our board instructional policy meeting? Because I'll do a major commercial and plug for this. So Spark is a partnership with, in the county, with Greenleaf is the lead agency that provides home-based parent education for three- to five-year-olds. So parent consultants go in, work with the parents, and teach them how to build literacy and numeracy-type skills plus social development. A lot of the same standards that you saw Pat talk about for preschool. The exciting thing about Spark is we have it in, I believe it's seven of our schools feed into the Spark program for three- to five-year-olds. The exciting thing is the data shows that the students who participate in Spark, they come in with kindergarten readiness assessment scores that are higher. That's what this chart is. But unlike a lot of other early childhood programs, now we're tracking the students all the way through third grade and fourth grade and now fifth grade. And the gains stick. So in third grade, if you've been a part of Spark, your scores are higher than students who didn't participate in Spark. Which goes to Reverend Walker's pitch here, I think, is the parent education, the parent engagement, learning those skills about how to support and create language-rich environments at home, that's the big ticket. And we have a heavy presence of that in our early learning program. But that's the ticket beyond even kindergarten, first grade, second grade, is that parent engagement piece. And that's why we love Spark. At Spark, we'd love to have Spark in every single neighborhood in the city. That would be our goal to expand that.
What does the scale mean? I mean, the scale here is different than the scale on the other kindergarten readiness outcome slide. I mean, what's the difference between 20.6 and 17? I mean, can you put that in layman's terms, I guess?
The KRA, the total overall score is a 30. I'll have my resident KRA expert sitting next to me to make sure. But so you can see the typical, the green comparison for those who have not participated in Spark. Their average walking in the door is a, we take it the first month they walk in the door as a kindergarten, is a score of 16 versus the 19.1. The average across the state, I think, is a 19 right now, is a 19, is the statewide average.
Okay, so that's taking into account every child regardless of socioeconomic background?
That's correct, that's correct.
So then the, I don't know if it was the first, I guess it's the fourth screen, our outcomes, it shows a scale up to 267. Now, is that a different assessment?
The, Pat, your earlier slide that showed the difference between, those are the, there's a scaled score that's also part of KRA versus the summary score that gets you to the 19. This is a little bit more detailed scaled score.
That's drilling down deeper into the stats, okay. And this, the outcomes, this includes the ELP and the peer groups, all combined?
Yes, this is any student who was a part of the early learning program compared to anybody who wasn't.
Do we see the same, the same acceleration if we compare just the ELP kids? Or not, I'm sorry, the IEP kids? If we're comparing IEPs that went through the program, early childhood learning, and the non-IEPs, you still see the same?
We'll, we'll get that for you.
I'd be curious on the peers as well.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point. We'll get that for you. We have the data that they have. But we'll get that too. So you can see the difference between students with disabilities and students without disabilities.
Another question, I've got two more. I think, are we looking to expand? I'm assuming we are. I mean, Essex is going to be cleared of everything Firestone this fall. So is there more opportunity to expand in that building? Or is it already full?
Absolutely. I don't think we will ever, ever, ever in this district turn away preschool seats or continue to find ways to expand it. Absolutely.
And lastly, an enrollment question. Are we sticking enrollment applications under these parents' nose at the end of the school year? So they come to us for kindergarten?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. We're pushing really hard. We, you know, are having our teachers do a lot with sending things home. Melissa Milford, our family services consultant, sends booklets home when we're having all of our open houses, our roundups to gather students to come to kindergarten. We're presenting programs for parents on transitioning to kindergarten so they have more information. Last year, when we did our transition to kindergarten meeting, we actually had someone from the enrollment office come in. And we were able to enroll children that day with parents. So yes, we are trying our best to get all of those children ready.
The vast majority of the ELP students stay with us. And if you think of it, they're already in our buildings. So it's, it's natural for them to stay. So we have a very high hit rate with the ELP.
Is there any way for us to find out where all this other money's going to the Head Starts? So we can sort of try to capture those preschool kids as well?
We do partner, the ELP program partners with the Head Starts. So we're, I mean, and we have some of the Head Starts within our own schools. We, we don't really usually compete with, it's not that we're competing against the Head Starts to get these seats. The seats come to the county, and so we say...
I'm thinking about competing, getting in our kindergarten seats.
Oh, yes, 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 absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pat, yes.
You mentioned your parent component. What percentage of parents are engaged with their student educational process? Especially those parents who may be new parents? Because I think if we can get them involved, if we have them involved with the educational process for their child, that will help them as well.
Well, we have a high percentage of our peer model parents who are in the school every day because they transport their children to and from school. So there is a tendency for them to participate more in some of the activities that we have in the school. We often have to localize some of those trainings. So there, it's very, it's variable. Sometimes we'll get a low percentage and sometimes we'll get a much higher percentage. Last year, when we did the transition, we had, percentage-wise, it's hard for me to guess, I'd say probably 25% of our parents and children who were transitioning to kindergarten came for one of our sessions. But sometimes when we have our other topics, we don't get them now. So we're trying to move those to other buildings so that we can at least catch some of the parents from those particular schools.
So those parents who don't, aren't involved in the school process, we have a piece that will help them at home with the kids as well?
We do send a lot of things home. And with the transition piece, we are sending more things home with our students who will be transitioning next school year.
My last question. Do we use those parents who are basically, who are actually really involved in the kid's process to recruit others, young parents possibly to be coming forward? Or those who may not be as involved, to reach out to them and try to pull them in too?
We haven't done that as much, just on a small scale. But you're right, we need to do more of that. Get our parents to be more advocates for us in the program.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Crowell. That was very informative. And I know we had a lot of questions, but that was, that was good, that the four members asked questions, especially questions that we need to know about. All right, next business we have on the agenda is approval meeting minutes from our board meeting on February 8, 2016.
So move the second.
The move is the second, any question? No questions, roll call.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mainsfield?
Yes.
Next superintendent recommendation.
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 35 personnel recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
So move the second.
The move is the second, any question? No questions, roll call.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mainsfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration three motions and eight resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
So move the second.
The move is the second, any question? No questions, roll call.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mainsfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Robson?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 35 business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
So move the second.
The move is the second, question?
Yes, item number 32 with the recommendation entering a service agreement with Ren Hill Group. I mean, can we hear a little bit more about that and what we're doing now, the cost involved in this? Supporting documentation, I didn't see any financials attached to it.
Michael, answer the question. Ren Hill Group is a company that provides substitute services, substitute management services for substitute teachers. We currently have two employees in our office who help us with that process. And that means calling employees, substitute teachers early in the morning, basically absence management for teachers who are absent. So as teachers, substitutes take assignments, we always end up with assignments that are not filled because of maybe late morning call-offs and things of that nature. So Ren Hill is a company that will help us with that so that we can try to get our absences filled. Our goal is 100% fill rate. So we'd like to do better than where we currently are with that. They will also help us with the process of selecting substitute teachers. They will do the applications, they will conduct review for us, and then they will refer the candidate to be recommended for hire.
What kind of, I guess, what's the financials involved with hiring Ren Hill?
We don't think it's going to be, we think it'll be about $20,000 a year, possibly less.
I hate to ask you all these questions. Currently, what is our fill rate on an average day?
It varies throughout the year. Right now, we have a high 90% fill rate.
That's pretty good.
It's very good. And there are, but there are times during the year where it may drop to a high 80% fill rate. So when that happens, other teachers in the buildings have to cover for teachers who are absent. And of course, that takes away from the educational turnover. So a goal is to have a higher, higher fill rate.
And you're confident that this will, I mean, this will help us to be better than what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Kathy, on that, is it, so this is just supplementing the two employees that are already doing that?
Yes, those still help out somewhat. But Ren Hill has the ability, because they have many staff, people on their staff, that they can start making the phone calls during the evening. And they start making phone calls at 5:30 in the morning to help fill those vacancies. But right now, we're doing it starting at 7:30 in the morning.
Instead of two people making the phone calls?
Yeah, they have a staff of people that do it, yes.
What's more asking? The, will teachers still be able to make requests and things like that for subs-specific people and all those things? Will they still be able to be filled with us?
Of course, that's what I'm thinking.
Any more questions on business affairs? Reverend Walker?
Since sister sends us here item 35, deals with our fresh fruits and vegetables.
This is not a change. This is just changing the amount being spent. As you...
As you remember, there was a change several years ago where additional fruit was offered with breakfast, so this is related to the breakfast meal service. And we have been very successful in offering additional fresh fruit that was left from lunch into breakfast. Well, now we would like to go ahead and offer specific items that are fresh on a more reasonable basis, and it's been so successful that the original budget to do this needs to be increased so that we can continue this throughout the year. It is a fresh fruit cup, and you usually see it on Thursday mornings, and it's been very successful, and the students are very pleased to have that additional fresh fruit as opposed to a juice, a vegetable juice, or a canned fruit. Okay? Thank you.
I'm not sure, it's not listed here, but it, it does talk about some concerns that we have with possibly, and maybe, maybe I might need to bring this up in new business, but there were articles in the USA Today about teachers and about what plan do we have as a district for teachers who have crossed the line in any number of infractions? There were two, two day article in the USA Today about that. And because there is no national system in place where the teacher leaves us and their license has been revoked or they have, you know, we let them go, is there a way a parent or someone else can check to see if those staff persons are, you know, qualified and gone through the necessary procedures so that we don't have that kind of problem? So I don't know if we have anything in place or how do we handle that?
Ohio Department of Education tracks all of our certified employees, particularly teachers, and there is a state code of conduct that teachers have to meet. And so a lot of times if there's an issue with a teacher, we'll get what's called a rat back notification from the state. So if they've been stopped, you know, what are some of the infractions, like a DUI, if they've been arrested for something, we will find out about it and then we work with the state to get that resolved.
Do we go into detail? I know when we had this discussion before, I think Kathy even said some school districts will call and they don't even ask for the detailed record, just were they employed or not?
Right.
When, when we go to other school districts, are we asking for more than just were they employed?
We get reference checks next.
We get reference checks.
And you can actually go on the Ohio Department of Education website and see a history of each person's certification. Mine is there, and Dr. McWilliams Woods is there.
What Reverend Walker was talking about was when people go across state lines, though, is what articles are called.
They will still have to be certified for the Ohio Department of Education to teach in Ohio, so we would see that.
Yes, would, you said that, you know, they could get the information, you know, DUI, maybe busted for some herb or something, but the, no, it's, what are you going to call it? You know, but, you know, and then later found that there was no, you know, it wasn't the case. It wasn't substantiated, I mean, does this reflect the whole story? Or are they tagged with this DUI arrest, or is it sealed and not, not allowed to be put on there, or what happens?
Yeah, I mean, there are some situations where someone, you know, a lot of, the problem is, so there are certain infractions in Ohio where by its code that are absolute bars to employment, and then there are other ones where there's a gray area. And, you know, in the past, when it's been like a current employee of ours that has gone through that, we brought some of those issues to the board. And then in other cases, I mean, we have very high standards in terms of hiring people, and typically, if there's been something on their record, we're going to take a very careful look before bringing them in to work with my kids, because I have kids in Akron Public Schools, as many of the folks in this room, so we're set a very high bar in terms of who's going to be teaching our kids. It's not just that they have a certification and we'll look at some of those issues. And you're right, a lot of times there are things where someone may have got stopped by the police, it was someone else in the, so we'll look through, you know, some of those issues as people are going through our hiring process.
So it's going to be on the record even though it was unsubstantiated?
Some, yes, if you go look through, okay, so like if it was something that happened here in Summit County, you go to the multi-jurisdictional website, you'll see a lot of those charges, and sometimes we'll have to send Ms. Porter to court to pull records so we can get to the bottom of it. But then, on the other hand, you know, as a, as an employer, do we want to spend all of that time going through when I have, you know, hundreds of candidates for a single job? And personally, in my opinion, I'm going to want my HR department to get the person that has nothing on their record. They've done all the things that they're supposed to do, have the certification, have the experience for the job versus someone who was in a car and they found, maybe they found weed or something else. Top quality people in front of our kids, that's really what it's all about. Very important.
Hey, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Altean?
Yes.
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mrs. Meadsfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Rodman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Treasurer, I need to back up a little bit, go back to personnel for the record. I need to abstain from items 34 and 35.
Mr. Wilson, thank you.
Next is President's Report. I might just have a few things, I don't want to take up too much time, but I do want to report that last Monday, there were, Patrick and I along with some other elected officials were asked to attend a meeting on infant mortality, and that included the infant mortality rate as well as race and how race can affect infant mortality rate. This was put on by democracy under the direction of, everyday democracy under the direction of Fran Frazier, who has done a lot of work in the state of Ohio, who came here to Akron to kind of oversee that decorum. And the dialogue was very good, there were a lot of good things, and the group came out with three areas which they stated they wanted to look at within the city of Akron, Summit County, and one was employment, the other was criminal justice, and the third one was education. And I think that we're doing pretty good. And when they say education, they were looking at all of education, and at one point, I thought they were talking about Akron Public Schools, so I kind of defended because of, but we were talking about schools period, charter schools, public schools, all, all schools, alternative schools, et cetera. But it was good dialogue, well, we have a next meeting which is on March the 3rd, I believe it is, at 5:30. It'll be at the Ohio Department of Public Health, or, you know, Ohio Department of Public Health on Market Street, I hope that's the right one.
Summit County.
Summit County, I'm sorry, Summit County, Summit County Public Health on, on Market Street. So it was really good information, very good dialogue, and I think it'll have, it'll come up with a plan of action that will take care of some of these, hopefully take care of some of these issues. Also, one of the things I would like to see us do as, as part of Akron Public Schools and a collaboration with the county department of public health, is to be able to collaborate and hopefully we can get immunization, because some of our kids don't get immunized, some of our kids don't get the, the proper shots that they need, so I'd like for us to work on that if we can, maybe there's some type of partnership that we can work on that they may be able to come in, provide this service for us maybe on a specific day or different times, and dates to allow parents to bring their kids in. I'm sure it would have to be a voluntary basis, but at least they will still be able to bring their kids in and get immunizations, because some kids don't, families don't have the healthcare that they really need in order to get a lot of this, although, and then you have some that just don't get their kids involved, I think that would be something good for us. Another thing is, I talked to the policy committee, I would like to see us have a equity policy, education equity policy, and that is something we'll be working on in the future, and that'll, that'll help, I think, some of the things that we talk about when we want our kids, that we talk about a closing achievement gap, we talk about pre-K, we talk about strengthening of teachers, we talk about all these things in an equity policy, education equity policy, that would include all that, including how we ship resources if we need to and so forth. So that'll be something that will be coming up. One of the things I was able to do, and I want to bring up in earlier, is I attended the Ohio School Board Association Vice President, President Workshop, and that was at Northeast Ohio, well, it used to be called Northeast Ohio College of Medicine, but now it's called Northeastern Medical University, and that was a very, very good workshop. There was so much that was given, I think any of us who take the seat here would be good to go to because it was very good information and I think it would help us in this seat. As Ms. Walsh mentioned, the championship basketball game was very nice. I want to commend the coaches and the players for having good sportsmanship. At the end of the game, they talked to each other, they shook each other's hand, and the coaches as well, and the coaches were very on it to make sure there was nothing that was going to go on. So I wanted to thank them for that and congratulate Firestone High School for becoming the city champs. And I want to wish all of our schools good luck in the upcoming tournaments because that's a big thing, anybody could, could win the tournament, so that's something we would like to, to do. And the last thing I have is something, I want to leave this for last, because Portage Path Elementary School, some of the students, there's something I thought was very, very nice, if you looked on our website, it was on part of our website, these young people got together and they came up with a plan along with their counselor or the, I'm sorry, the dean of students there, and they wanted to do a service learning project, and their service learning project was to make educational kits to take the kids who were in the hospital, because those kids couldn't get education, they couldn't be in school, so they wanted to have, give them something to do such as reading, such as writing, such as coloring, things of that, and I thought that was very, very nice that the kids were doing that. I mean, that's teaching our kids at an early age, hey, you give back, you know, giving services, doing service and having service as part of your, your everyday work outside of your eight to five or nine to five or whatever it may be, to, to do something like this. So I want to congratulate and commend those kids, those students at, at Portage Path Elementary as well as their dean of students. With that, we can move to committee reports. Legal contract? Sorry, back up, back up, I'm sorry. Treasurer's report? I'm sorry. Did I pass your superintendent's report? I'm going too fast, I'm trying to get out of here. Let's tag up, that, that, President's report should have been after the superintendent's report. Let's go superintendent's report, then we'll go treasurer's report, then committee, I'm sorry.
Last week, I had the opportunity to sit in on our federal review, and that's where representatives from the Ohio Department of Education come in, and they will review our federal funds expenditures, so that was held over at Room 10 at the OAT Building. They really didn't find anything of any real major importance. I think the treasurer has one small issue that we could take a collection around the table and take care of. Folks from the Ohio Department of Education were real complimentary of how all of our staff were, had worked with them for the different departments in the review, and I'm sure Dr. McWilliams Woods would like to add a few comments to that.
Absolutely. It's all the folks sitting around this room who manage all the federal programs, it's quite a few. There's, I think it's 11 or 10 different federal programs that they come, there's 13 staff that arrived in the district from the Ohio Department of Ed, and they spend two days looking at every single detail of how we spend the money, whether we can find every piece of equipment that we purchase, how we do professional development, and then whether we're compliant with all the rules that go with spending those funds. So I want to applaud the folks that are around on the outside of the room, they don't get accolades enough. We tend to be folks that we don't need a lot of kudos, but this is one of those moments when you get through a federal review and the head of the review team said this was an exemplary review. When you get that, it feels really good and you know that you've got some pretty incredible staff members leading this district. So I'll just leave the applause to these guys.
What is that about, 200 million? Is that roughly?
It's, the federal review is a little over 31 million. Just to put that in perspective, that's larger than most Ohio schools' budget of the 614 districts around the state.
That's a portion of our annual budget, federal programs, federal grant funds?
As a portion, like percentage? Is that what you mean? Wouldn't make me do the math in my head. 20%?
Yeah.
So I just, yeah, if I could, I don't know, are you done with your, okay. I, I'd just like to echo the same sentiment, and I think they're going to hear even more. I've been through a few of these federal reviews, not only annually we go through a federal audit with the state of Ohio, but this is an onsite audit. I think our team had a number of folks, more than that are in this room, so I know dozens of folks who are on hand, all hands on deck. But the backend collaboration of our departments putting together the, maybe even thousands of pages of documents was unbelievable. I've never seen anything like it, any other federal review. And the question cost that we were talking about is so nominal that it's going to be corrected with an accounting transfer. So I'm, I'm very much appreciative as it goes to represent our overall state audit as well, which we're going to be going through here in a couple weeks to close out, so I commend that. It was 31 million, and the amount of documents that they reviewed, even such that the financial team from ODE decided not to come. They were able to retrieve everything electronically, which they, they had not done, and I think that they're going to take that example and move on and suggest that to other districts. The finance team from ODE Grants Management didn't even show up. They reviewed everything, you know what? So fantastic, way to go, Kathy. This is fantastic. Okay, on other financial reports, I'd just like to plant some seeds for the finance committee that's going to report out on the cash balance. Page three of your finance report, I know a lot of times, this time of year, as we come into May, end of your cash balance, we just kind of look at that snapshot. I draw you to line 6.01, which is highlighted on page three. It shows us with a revenue over expense surplus this year of about 4.8 million. When we move into next year is when we start deficit spending. Again, I'm just planting that seed now as we begin to talk about the district cash balance policy 6234. The other thing I'll mention is, I know last year in March and April, I hit pretty hard in the fact that ODE was just releasing the student data related to open enrollment and charter and having an impact on our financials. We hit about a month earlier, but still, I just want to make the point that our books are going to be affected starting in February, so we'll be able to reconcile what ODE has in terms of charter score enrollment, in terms of OD, in terms of open enrollment. And so now's the, now's the time when we really reconcile the books between what ODE says what the numbers are in terms of enrollment and what we have on the books. So I think, take a look at next month's financials, February and March are going to be really important to follow. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Many reports?
Legal contracts have no, no report this time, except that I do apologize, I thought I was over this call more than I was, so I'm not going to get you.
Passing it on to everyone, my apologies.
Finance committee?
Yes, we're actually want to do first reading and introduction of our district cash balance policy 6234. I don't know if I want, do we want to read the whole thing here? No? Okay. I do want to highlight one part of it though, one paragraph in here, "The Government Finance Officers Association," easy for me to say, "recommends a minimum cash balance in the general fund of no less than two months of general operating expenditures." That's a general statement in the policy, we're going to leave the policy, if approved by the board, in a somewhat general term, but the finance committee, I believe, is going to recommend that we carry at least 10% of annual expenditures as our cash balance policy, subject to no less than the low water mark of any one month during the upcoming budget. So, you know, if we're 10% of 300 So, you know, if we're 10% of $320 million at 32 million, but we have a month where we have to have 35 million, we're proposing that we follow that instead of the 10%. So which is ever is greater, 10% or the, how do I write it here? The ending cash flow. And basically, if we could go to Ryan's finance report and back to page three that he pointed out in the finance report, three of nine, if you look at the bar graph, you'll see our expenditures roughly 320 million right now. So we're proposing 10% or 32 million. And then if you go to the second to the last page of the finance report where you'll see projected monthly cash flows, at no time are we under 32 million in our projection. So we're not looking to go any more than 32 million for this fiscal year. Now, if we were to fall below that, we'd want to make sure, if we need more money than that, we'd want to make sure to adjust that figure. Hopefully you follow what I'm saying there. So that's our first reading of that policy and we'll take any and all questions.
And I think that's more, what we've tried to do here since Tim and I started on the finance committee when Jack Pearson was still here as treasurer, that's how long we've been kind of looking at this. And in 2012, the voters in the city were extremely gracious and gave us an opportunity to kind of, to keep going and to put some programs and some services and some staff back in place. And I think this is an effort too for us as a tool for the board to help keep an eye on the finances, to work with the treasurer's office to let us know when we see that deficit spending starting to creep in, when we see cash on hand starting to become something of an issue. We're trying to stretch every last dollar that the community has given us since 2012 and to make sure that we as a board and as a finance committee are just aware. This is in, and we've been working with the superintendent on this as well, who comes to our finance committee meetings. So certainly not in any way, you know, to tie his hands up those times when deficit spending is something that needs to be done, but to provide us as a tool for awareness. And so the policy is suggestive rather than absolutely prescriptive and really more requires that the treasurer keep in contact with the finance committee and the board and let us know when those things occur, when we do approach that cash balance or that threshold, when we, when it looks like we're going to dip below that minimum threshold. So I think this is a great policy, we're going to dive into it or probably talk about it a little more at our next finance committee and certainly the board is encouraged to be there if you'd like to participate in that discussion as well.
I would just like to add that I think it's great that there's nothing that kicks in automatically. I think that it's great that it's informational. Having come from boards that, prior to this levy being passed and looking at the deficits that we were facing and looking at, you know, the cuts that we had to make, having been on the, you know, that board or one of those boards, it's great that we, that we're going to have our eyes on that. It's great that we're going to be watching for it, but it's also great that there's not something that's going to tie another board's hands. Because that's always been my concern, that if we were going to put in a policy like this or tie the superintendent's. I know that there have been times where we've dug into something and found a policy that a previous board had passed and went, what were they thinking? So that's always something that, ever since then, I know that we're very mindful of stepping forward with caution on tying those hands while still being fiscally responsible and having the finance committee as a really strong working committee and under Ryan and the superintendent, I think that it will be a good policy.
Just the watermark that we've set, a month of payroll is approximately 12 million? Okay, so we're in the ballpark too with that GFOA recommendation of approximately two months just in payroll alone, so that doesn't include everything else.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, let's move on to instructional policy, student achievement.
The Instructional Policy and Student Achievement Subcommittee met February 19 and we would like to highlight two important items. The first, in the Business Affairs Agenda to Make, item 28. You approve the next phase of our conversion of the North High School into college and career academy. Forward Next Generation Learning, which is a national organization that provides career academy technical assistance to schools and districts, will be coming to Akron next month to begin professional development for North and to work with the district on creating a strategic plan for our career academy concept. We will hear more about this from the superintendent at his State of the Schools address tomorrow.
Just in case you forgot. So I just want to point out that, first of all, it kind of built, but the superintendent was incredibly modest about the audit that took place. And I know Ryan spoke a little bit to it and then Ellen kind of added or vice versa. But this was a really big deal. So just to not let him get away with too much of his modesty, there were several grants that are reviewed that come under those federal programs, our Title I program for Part A, which is education for disadvantaged youth, Title I for school improvement, Title I for migrant education, Title I for neglected and delinquent youth, Title II for improving teacher quality, Title II for limited English proficiency, Title IV for 21st Century Learning Centers, Title VI for low-income school programs, Title VII for education of homeless children and youth. Those are major, major things that are incredibly complicated. They analyzed the budget, the expenditures, the inventories, the teacher licensures, the highly qualified requirements and the appropriate use of funds. They visited schools, they interviewed teachers. So to come out with someone from ODE who was Elaine Sanders saying that this was an exemplary review is a really incredible thing to have happen. The district was complimented across hundreds of requirements and, or was compliant across hundreds of requirements and received positive reviews for the budgeting, for monitoring and for all of their compliance. So we want to make sure that this is really touted, this is not something to be modest about, this was a great accomplishment and a lot of people's work went into it to make it come out so well.
I believe while we have the state audit of federal funds every year, this one happens how often?
Three, two, three.
Two or three, so.
Is that not what you'd see?
Yeah, big deal for not, you know, them not coming in for two or three years and then.
And so we want to thank and congratulate Keith Leitsch, Coordinator of School Improvement, for leading the entitled federal program review process. We also want to thank every staff member who works tirelessly every day to use our federal funds to provide excellent services to our students at risk. And we were to ask the superintendent to comment, but he, unless you have some additional comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Very good work is being done around the district and we appreciate it. I've been apologizing first of all to the superintendent, treasurer, for passing you guys up on the agenda, trying to get us out of here. Next, any unfinished business? New business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one item. We need to do a resolution authorizing the use of urgent necessity to complete some HVAC repairs at Reading's school. The compressor component of the HVAC system is down and we need to seek that approval because it's estimated to cost in excess of $25,000 to get that system repaired.
We have a motion to approve the, come out, ready by the superintendent?
So moved.
Second.
However you want to dice that up, yeah.
The move is second, any question? Roll call.
Mr. Alzine?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mainskill?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Okay, we will need to go into executive session. So pursuant to Ohio Design Code, Section 121.22G1, I hereby move that the board adjourn into executive session for the purpose of considering employment.
So moved.
Second.
The move is second, roll call.
Mr. Alzine?
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Mainskill?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Okay.